Yes, it's on. Just click the switch on, Mr. President.
Heavenly Father, once again we come before you appreciating the privilege of living in this great country of ours. We thank you for this privilege where we have freedom of expression and a compassionate government. We ask that you guide us so that we can be worthy of that privilege. We especially ask that you guide our elected leaders in this endeavor. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
We have established forums, Councilman Rodriguez, Councilman Nieto, Councilman Castillo. Councilman Nieto has an illness in the family and I believe Councilman Rodriguez will be about 20 minutes late. Everyone will please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the right of this side, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, the Constitution of our own God, one and indivisible.
Okay, at this time I'd like to end any citizens' comments.
Good afternoon, evening. Our FDIC board recently experienced Andy Uvain's resignation. And I think I would be remiss as the Secretary of that organization not to bring to your attention and to the community's attention what an extraordinary leader he has been on this board. He has helped bring the FDIC into compliance. We have been on the straight and narrow, we've gotten a lot of things accomplished over the two years that Andy's been on that board and served as our President. And I would just like to recognize that extraordinary service from him. In addition to that, I know that for consideration in action tonight is appointments to our 4D board. And I would say that I've heard all kinds of rumors that you're going to put that off, you're not going to do it tonight. And I would urge you to consider making those appointments so that we can continue the continuity of the work that we've put on the table and have been able to come to fruition over the last couple of years. I think the fact that we've had a consistent board, we're not obligated to any political side, one way or the other, or individual. And that's the way we really like to see it happen. This is a growing community, as you know. We need strong leaders on that board who know what they're doing, who have experience in running businesses, understanding real estate, understanding how to read financial reports. Those are important factors. So when you do make those appointments, I would urge you to make those appointments with those kinds of qualities in mind. And I would ask too that if you don't reappoint me, I'd like to know why. Thank you.
Ms. Teague, I'd like to add to that that y'all even have already started to pay being out of industrial partner. I'm sorry, can you hear me? That y'all have already started to pay being out of industrial partner.
We've begun the process, yes, finally, finally. And I think the other thing to point out is through Andy's leadership, we've avoided some sticky situations out there. And I'm very appreciative of his leadership.
Anyone else? Okay, then we're going to go on to Old Business, 1A, consideration in action to approve the meeting minutes on the regular council meeting on November 13th.
Make the motion to approve the meeting, the council meeting on November 13th.
I have a motion, Councilman Rodriguez.
Second?
Councilman Nieto. Councilman Rodriguez, how do you?
I have to say.
Councilman Castillo?
Yes.
Tommy Baker?
Aye.
Oliver Fores? Motion carries. Three, one. Okay, now we're going to go on to 2, presentation and discussion. We're going to start with A, statement of qualification for generic firm, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. This is the second firm that we had for qualifications statement that you have presented before you for information sharing. This is the second company and we need your direction to staff. To invite them to present to you in January or February of next year. So do you have any questions in reference to the qualifications? Then I can schedule them to come sometime, either both four firms or one firm to come and present to the council in January. Yes, they're excited by coming to present to you.
It'll be both of them, correct?
Yes, both of them come on the same night, yes, sir.
Okay, now we're going to go on with item 2B of City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. What I wanted to say was I wanted to say thank you to the community volunteers and the mayor. And a special thank you to Phelps. That helped us decorate the city hall, the city downtown, as well as along 181 for our holiday events. It was a wonderful event in time for the chamber event that they had on that Saturday. And then again, the event they had at Riverdale with the fireworks. So it was really exciting and we all attended. The next thing I would like to report on is that I was able to attend. Tommy Baker informed me of the meeting that they were having at the YMCA. We met him in Laverne regarding the YMCA steering committee. So I'm now going to be part of that committee and looking at a wish list and a private partnership, locations and things such as that are listed on the report. That we're going to be meeting hopefully to see the need of the community of Laverne as well as Florisville and the course of location. It has not been timed to date. The water well update, we finished our second phase of repairs. We did some testing, has to have three consecutive good testing in order for us to put it back online. We had two, but one did not actually comply, so we're going to try again with three testings. Met actually with Tom Turk last night and he said that, our engineer from MNS, and he said that he'll be following up to make sure, but hopefully before the end of next week, we should have that back online. Equipment purchases. The city of Florida, they were able to participate in professional sale of a tire tax from the past of taxes. We received, I believe it was five pieces of equipment for $5,980. The retail price for that was only about $12,810. So we were able to definitely get a discount. And the mayor was definitely on the scene to help us out with that. So we want to thank you, Mayor, for helping us do that. Eli from our maintenance crew was able to confirm, these are all branding. In your packet, there's a picture of what they look like. We received all five of those items. Also Eli, we're getting purchasing some vehicles. Currently, some of our vehicles are kind of old for the water departments or the sewer department. And so hopefully we can find some discount prices as well. And I'll update you on that coming forward. We do have some new staffers. David Peoples is in our permanent tech position. Kevin Philwin is now with our sewer department. Johnny Gennaro is not new, but he's transferred to the water department. That was his selection, his, once we posted, he opted to do that and he interviewed that position. And actually was transferred to that department.
You might want to turn it down.
Our phone system, and I did put a supplemental report in reference to our phone system. It's currently in transition, we're trying to work out all of the bugs. We still have lots of bugs in that system. We're working with the police department, we'll be fully ready. We're hoping that we can, we're working diligently on taking care of all those issues and hopefully it will be resolved in the next five to seven business days. We have quite a few events I have attached to your prior. Some of this of the Sheriff's and the Swift Kitchen, Judge Keen's retirement event. And of course, our luncheon on December 19th, you have invitation in your packet. Currently staff is working with Grant Works on the grants for the city of Florisville. We'll be having some public hearings in January. So just want to let you know that we're going to be having those prior to some meetings based on what we need to do for our CPG, comprehensive plan and some of our parks. Most of the grants require a public hearing portion to it, and so that's what we'll be doing prior to city council meetings. We're going to probably schedule them at like 6:30 so that we can not necessarily have 10 o'clock meetings with the city council. In conclusion, I'd like to say thank you. Let everybody have a beautiful holiday and safe travels if you're traveling and a happy new year. End of my report, are there any questions or anything I can address?
On that water well update, what was the reason for the samples to come?
They didn't give a reason, they just didn't pass a test. I think we need to run a little bit longer. We need to adjust some of our chemicals in reference to that so that we can get a third positive test. Also, as a side note, I did put some supplemental reports by your desk and my comprehensive plan, comprehensive time, so if you have any questions, I can talk to you about later, but it's not on the agenda. I'm sorry, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. On the YMCA, who will be creating the community commissions for itself?
Actually, they're looking for us. They did a survey for Laverne and they're preparing to do a survey for us that we can share with our community.
Who is the YMCA?
The YMCA, yes, ma'am.
And this will be brought back to us?
Yes, ma'am. They're only having a few meetings and as I attend meetings, there's a survey that they did for Laverne and I'll be bringing back the survey for the citizens of Florisville so that they can answer. What I had represented, brought to the table was a more of a regional approach so that hopefully we can talk about Laverne and Florisville because there may be an issue of Florisville traveling to Laverne and we're trying to Florisville. So we're looking, hoping to do more of a regional county approach rather than one city or the other.
Will counties be addressed, for example, with the Boys and Girls Club?
They are two different entities.
And I realize that.
I mean, Boys and Girls Club is a lot like the YMCA. But the YMCA, from what they told us initially, they're looking for a site to build, to have their own building. They bring in a part where they actually build some bricks and mortar, so it's more of a partnership. Where I think our relationship with the Boys and Girls Club and I did meet with Ms. Vaughn actually yesterday. They're more so a partnership where they want us to give them a home. And it's really becoming a little encumberment of us giving them a home. So we're going to work on how we can do that. Yes, ma'am.
Hey, I have a couple of questions. I thought that the issue at the water tank thing was the chlorine.
They have to have three good samples in reference to that. Chlorine is one of the issues and it just tested, it tested twice positive. It was a good, not a problem, but the third test did not come out like it needed to be. So we can't put that back online until we have three consecutive good tests.
Do those tests tell us what it has too much of?
Yes.
And those two have, did they tell me?
They, I haven't seen the report, but we're going to be looking into that. That's what I was talking to Tom Turk about last night at our meeting.
You said you had two.
We had, see, they were good. The last one, they said, no, we didn't have problems. The other thing is because that well has been offline, there's some paperwork we have to do with TCQ before we can put it back into our systems as well.
On the phone system. I could actually tell you that my phone actually was working as of time. I only had a phone in my office for a while.
Well, we did meet with Aaron yesterday.
Yesterday?
Yesterday. He went over to do some things at the police department with our T1 line to make some adjustments so that we can work on that. Because it has been a problem for myself as well. It's been intermittent, so we're hoping to work on the bugs. We have been working on it and hopefully it was a lot better today and we're hoping to get better as we go forward.
I guess my question is, if we spent all this money to Verizon, which we spent a lot of money, why did the base have a technician to come and train everybody and make sure everything was working? We're using Monica from the PD and she's not a mobile technician.
We're using Monica from the PD because she has actually been modeling for most of the phone, is at the PD. The city's equipment is at the PD, nothing's at the city hall. So the antenna that's on top of the city hall is actually literally pointed towards city hall. So everything is located at PD, even the phones and numbers to give out for our fax, it's all located at the PD.
So Verizon did not offer that part in their deal?
No, they don't do the tech part. Most communities have a tech person on standby, we do not.
It's like Councilman Anthony Son of the Park, giving you the key and saying, you can go figure it out. They don't pay a lot of money.
Well, Kami can answer any of your questions in reference to detail because she worked with it.
Initially, when I contacted Verizon for us to do the switch of the phone, it was because we wanted a phone line that was a landline. We didn't want to have anything to do with having a phone system attached to the internet. Because of our needs of having a system that would take a phone call and direct it to the department it belonged to, we do not qualify to have a landline. Verizon doesn't offer that. Now, they did offer the option to come in and do the installation, but the city had Verizon previously. So all the equipment is already installed. All we needed to do was assign the phone numbers and install the phone. And that was a lot cheaper option. We were going to have to pay additional money if they would come in and install them themselves. Now, the problem that we're having right now is because the internet switch has not happened yet. Okay, and that they are reviewing because we never had Verizon internet before. It's taking longer because they are reviewing the equipment and that is going to be installed by them. We, there's no way that we can do that.
My next question would be, did we have to buy new phones or did we have used these?
The existing phones were not consistent and they're old phones already. Some were not working and we are getting a buyback on those phones. So we're not actually...
Did they offer a buyback originally?
No, they didn't, they didn't. I asked for it.
She said I think we're spending like, I would think, probably like $12,000 or something we really, really need.
No, we did need it. And then there's still some equipment that we're going to send back that they already need because of the need that they thought we had. They send us some equipment extra, but we're going to send that back, so we're going to get credit. So the initial quote that you have there, that was just an initial quote.
Well, I think it's in that supplemental report that I already gave, some people have to do that.
Now, the internet, are we getting like bids or something from different services?
We got, we got bids later after I had already committed myself to Verizon. And there's nothing that compares to the service that Verizon is going to give us. The post that we have, it's low speed. And as it is right now with Internet America, we have the highest, it's a .2 gigabytes. And that is very low. With Verizon, we're going to get 30 gigabytes of speed. And that's for downloads and uploads. So it is going to be a lot faster and that's going to assist also with the function of the phone.
Listen, when we talked about it, Henrietta, you told me something about Laverne, Laverne, .5.
Yes, well, I spoke to, I spoke to Aaron and one of the things we're asked is, I was like, I was dying with those telephones. It was our T1 line. It's still because of the way we have it now, he wanted to come and check it and see. But he was able to tweak the system, as you said, to your phones would be better that we don't need to have LV temporarily in this stopgap. Now, using Verizon for your phones and for your internet is a bundle. And so they're giving us a better rate, a government of better rate because we're bundling together. Because we have our cell phones with Verizon, now we have our wireless with Verizon, and then we'll have our internet with Verizon, so it's a better deal for us as a bundle.
How long do you think it'll take before we're off totally?
Thirty, I mean, thirty, we're, we're going to need 30 more days.
I know the citizens are complaining that they can't get through. If you're talking to somebody on the phone and you're like, you can't hear them.
Yes, so those things are a lot better than we're concerned and we're constantly doing that, but we need to get a higher speed. So we're hoping that 30 days will be 100% enough.
And also, we're having a problem with the antenna that is at the city hall that I cannot get. And that is going to institute more. So there's a lot of interference in between the communication from police department to the city hall. So those two antennas need to be raised up so that way the communication is a lot better.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, now we're going to go on to 2C, financials, September 2014, revenue and expenses.
Okay, good evening, again. And I would like to let you know that I have changed the format that I'm going to be presenting these financial reports. I want to make it easier and more pleasant to read for you and also for us to be able to go ahead and just copy, one copy and have it available for the citizens when they come to the meeting so they can follow us when we're talking about the financials. However, even though it's just one page, it's got a lot of information on it. And then also you have the detail attached to your packet. So that way, if you have any questions, you can go ahead and ask. Okay, so let me go ahead and begin and give you an overview of this report. And I thought that this was very important because it was the last month of the year, prior year. And I wanted to give you the actual amended budget at the end of September. Okay, that is the column to the left. And then after that, I also wanted to give you current revenues collected, current expenditures and balance, and also the fund balance. So you have the components of three or four reports all in one sheet. So, and I have it also by fund, okay? The most important funds that I have listed here and I would like to talk about, it will be general fund and the utility fund. For the general fund, the amended budget was $4,335,955. And the reason for that is because there was more collections. And in August, I came into, before council, and I requested a budget amended so that way I could increase the revenues and align them with the expenditures. That doesn't mean that because I aligned them that we had additional money to spend. That money that was additionally collected went to fund balance. The beginning fund balance of general fund was $70,0278 on a deficit. And I didn't put it in red because I'm going to scare anybody. Okay, revenues collected were $3,669,738. Expenditures for the entire year were $3,433,183. I just want to find you that these numbers are not audited. There's still some adjustments that the auditors are going to come in and do into these amounts. The ending balance, and that is revenues against expenditures, is $236,555,000. You take that amount minus our deficit, we ended up the year with $166,277 on the black. Okay, that still is not audited, so it's still getting called over. The utilities fund, 221, with the amended budget, we ended up with a $2,157,328. Our beginning fund balance was $3,779,758. And I want to go ahead and point out, and I'm going to put that in the next report to say, the 2013, 2014 beginning fund balance is audited, so there's no change on that. Revenues collected was $2,139,299. Expenditures were $1,618,023. Ending balance was $521,027. Add that to the beginning fund balance, we ended up with $4,301,034. I want to go ahead and point out at the end of the report, I did some fund highlights. The general fund, 301, like I mentioned before, un-audited fund balance is $166,277. The general fund is out of the deficit officially and it is in compliance with the Insurgency Plan. The street maintenance department, or excuse me, fund, is still working on completing the 10 streets project they have, that we started a year with. It has not been completed. The 4A cooperation plan, 570, I wanted to point out that we received a settlement amount of $875,004 repairs. However, this amount overstates the revenues by that amount. This money is committed to do the repairs of the civic center. This concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
Can you be more specific on that 10 street project?
Mayor, can you please use the microphone, we can't hear you.
My question was to tell us more specifically what the 10 street project is.
Well, when I, no, no, no. When I, when I started working for the city back in March, there was in the books a project of 10 streets that were going to be repaired. Okay, and I just wanted to point out that up to September 30th, that project was not completed yet. So it was brought forward to the next year and I just went.
We have a street named 10th Street and that's what I was saying, I'm like, what's going on on 10th Street?
No, 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 it's like the project of...
About the ones that were picked in order of importance.
Yes, yes.
Now, you said that the 4A was understated.
No, overstated.
Okay.
The revenues are overstated.
So that means that it should be $4 million plus, right? Because you have to add back in there that settlement because it's included in there?
No, it's already included in there. There's a reason why the un-audited ending balance, the last column, the deficit is only $3,970,838. And the reason for that is because those $875,000 are included in there.
And that includes the rentals concessions and anything?
On your revenues?
Right there in that 4A. Any income that comes in to the facility?
On the revenue, the revenue amount collected for the year was $1,351,589. That includes the $875,000. The expenditures were only $145,000 for the year. That's where the overstatement is.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
One thing, the report looks great, thank you. It's a lot simpler, you said it's more fun to read everything, gives you all the highlights. Is there any way if you can just add the sales facts in here, so can you judge?
Absolutely.
It looks great, thank you.
I didn't think about that. Thank you.
Now, we're going to go on to item 2B, municipal fourth quarter report for the third quarter 2014, July through September 2014. It's Judge Jimenez.
For those of you who may not know, this is our new report, Judge, Judge Jimenez. And I'm Randy Hawkins on the court clerk. I will be reading the report for July 1st through September 30th of 2014. Violations filed by date for the police department were 627. Florisville ISD were four, transferred out were two, and code enforcement were 14. For total filed violations of 647. Completed cases paid by fine were all zero. Before the judge, the police department, 133. Florisville ISD, zero, transferred out two, code enforcement, zero. For before the judge, total of 135 and a total completion of 135. Other completed, dismissed by DSC mandatory. These are dismissals that were allowed by law for people that took a driving safety course as a dismissal option. Police department, nine. Florisville ISD transferred out and code enforcement, all zero, for a total of nine. Dismissed after deferred disposition. This is where defendants request the court defer judgment for a period of time for them to not have any additional citations, they comply with any terms set by the court. Police department, 37. Florisville ISD, one, transferred out and code enforcement, zero, for a total of 38. Dismissed presented insurance. Fewer defendants that had an insurance violation presented valid insurance and it was dismissed. Police department, 11. Florisville ISD transferred out and code enforcement, all zero, for a total of 11. Dismissed by judge. Florisville Police Department, one. Florisville ISD transferred out, code enforcement, all zero, for a total of one. Compliance dismissal. These were people that had violations like a light being out, or inspection, or registration. They got into compliance and paid a dismissal fee. Police department, thirty-four, I'm sorry, thirty-two. Florisville ISD transferred out and code enforcement, all zero, for a total of thirty-two. Dismissed by prosecutor. These were cases that came before the prosecutor for review. The prosecutor reviewed them and sent them for dismissal. Police department, forty-four. Florisville ISD, fourteen, code enforcement, no, I'm sorry, transferred out, one. Code enforcement, zero, for a total of fifty-nine. Voided docket. These were entries that were, either had mistakes, or they were entered twice in error. So they had to be voided. Police department, twenty. Florisville ISD transferred out and code enforcement, all zero, for a total of twenty. Total other completed, a hundred and seventy. Grand total completed, three hundred and five. With a net difference filed and complete of three hundred and forty-two. Warrants issued from the police department, thirty-six. Florisville ISD transferred out and code enforcement, all zero, for total violations of thirty-six, and total warrants issued of thirty-six. Warrants cleared. Police department, twenty. Florisville ISD, zero, transferred out, three, code enforcement, zero. Total violations, twenty-three. Total warrants cleared, twenty-three. Change in total warrants of thirteen. The page three is the breakdown of the court costs for each fee that we collect in the court. For a total fine, total fees and fines paid of fifty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents.
All of these were under Chinavarda, and we had a different prosecutor who was Dana Fola.
Can you explain the net difference filed completed, and what does that specify?
Net difference filed completed, the violations filed for the month versus the violations completed for the month.
Whatever three hundred and forty you left uncompleted?
Correct. And the ones completed include previous months as well.
That's what I asked completed?
Yes.
Because under the previous judge?
Yes.
And a different prosecutor too?
Have we issued any of those warrants or anything?
Excuse me?
Have we started to issue out of the warrants or anything?
Not yet, no.
We did, we issued some of that docket.
Yeah, those have been recalled or interdisted, which should, or the warrants that had been issued last time.
Is there any reason why we haven't issued those warrants?
It's happening.
Because, yeah, she doesn't have any help. And she's up to here in docket, I mean, a warrant and everything else, trying to fix new ones and old ones, and you teach the new one.
But I thought the old ones, a lot of them were already ready. But you only had some.
Yeah, they've been there, since I got in, they were already, some were already in there, yeah.
Is there a statute of limitations on those warrants?
Excuse me?
Is there a statute of limitations on those warrants?
Not on the warrant, so warrant is a warrant. What's this issue?
You may have the numbers, you may not. This is up to September thirty, September, excuse me, and October, November, how many violations were filed?
I don't, I didn't run a report for those months. Our next time we present, we'll play those pictures.
And then you're still working to complete these three hundred and forty-two uncompleted, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you're playing catch-up for me.
Well, it usually just found new ones and then some old ones, you know, etc.
But I'm sure the number of violations increases when it comes in.
Yes. Please have a look from July to September. Yes. Any other questions? Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask you, what is their plan to get, do they need additional help temporarily?
I think there's an item later on in the agenda.
Okay, now we're gonna go on to the update on the TABC permit for the civic center.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all are aware, this has come up a couple times regarding the TABC permit. Eventually, we do wanna get it transferred over to the city itself. And city manager Turner and I are meeting with the TABC next week to get a new permit issued. But that's gonna take approximately forty-five days. So while that's going on, we need the four A to continue to hold the permit. The problem is, there's been some personnel shuffling over on the four A. And so the people that were named as the individuals that were backing the permit were no longer there. So we had to go through, and the president and the secretary were required to sign off on the permit. Mr. Gleason signed off, so we got that squared away. We had some issues with getting the secretary to sign off on there, or naming a secretary to sign off on there. Mr. Jocelyn, who currently sits on the four A, was kind enough to come in and take on that responsibility. So pending tomorrow's four A meeting, where they'll officially nominate him as an officer. If that passes and the four A board does make him the secretary, we'll immediately send that over to TABC. That should keep the TABC, uh, the four A's permit valid with the TABC until the city's permit comes into effect. So we just wanted to give you all kind of a little update on what's going on there. Any questions?
Now, we're gonna go on to two F, necessity for special meeting concerning board appointments.
And in the council packets on there, there was a memo that legal submitted on this issue. And really what it is, is it's a lot of housekeeping things that we're recommending to be done. The way these appointments have been done in the past, it's either been nominating an entire slate of people to be put on, or without removing the previous people, or just nominating groups where we have to track down quite a bit of information to figure out who's actually on the board. What triggered this mostly was the TABC issue, where we found out there was a secretary who was on the board. There was a new slate of five people appointed to the four A, but there was never really a formal removal of individuals that were sitting on the board. So it's, is the secretary replaced? Were only four of them appointed because there was still somebody that wasn't removed? And it's just a bunch of housekeeping things that, from a legal perspective, could eventually come back upon us when these issues arise. So what we wanted to do was kind of have a meeting, this was already a long enough agenda on here. So we wanted to try to have it set at a meeting where these issues could be talked about, could be gone through, and say, we're recommending that each individual that you wanna remove from the board, there's a nomination to remove that person, a second, a vote, then they're removed. It's in the minutes, it's on there, and then as each candidate is put forth, they're done one at a time. So that you have a nomination, second appointment, nomination, decline, and then it would just move on down the road. Because of that, that would take a lot more time. Instead of just nominating a slate of five people, seconded, and appointing, you're gonna have to do it individually. It's gonna take a lot longer. So that was just the recommendation on how to kind of try to sort these issues out as we move forward here.
I think it's still a necessity to, for us to appoint some board members because if not, you know, the ones that, whose terms are already fulfilled, we don't have any more, there won't be enough to make a forum.
Well, there will be, like, Councilwoman Castillo said, there are some holdover provisions where until a replacement is qualified to sit, that person will stay. I know Mr. Ubanks, who has spoken up highly and I've dealt with him, and he's a very great president, he has resigned. So he wouldn't hold over. But individuals who were just turned out would still remain in that position.
But there's still some that have resigned.
Right, and I know Mr. Ubanks has, I'm not aware of anyone else.
Mr. Castro, okay?
Mr. Castro.
But, but that's just not, I mean, that's...
And that's the council's decision.
The four A board as well, you know, there's been resignations as well, such as Mr. Jocelyn.
And I believe Mr. Jocelyn actually retracted his resignation. Why are you seconding him? Right behind you.
He retracted your resignation.
My only reason for doing that is to assist the city as, as my goal has always been. My intentions were, and I spoke to my fellow board members and told them that I was gonna step down. My sole purpose, or my main goal during my tenure was to settle the lawsuit, something that was pending when I was still city manager. I wanted to do that. But if I didn't do what needed to be done, then the establishment was gonna lose its license, and the people that graciously booked that would be out. So that's the only reason that I'm staying. But I wanna make sure that, that it's in the minutes that I'm only staying till the city manager is, is on the license. Because my, my intention was to step off of the board.
Can you tell us if they have a forum right now, a board?
I believe that, yeah, there's still four members on there.
I maintain that, right now, yes.
Correct. So four A does, four B, how many active members does four B have?
Four.
That are, that are willing to participate in board meetings to form a forum? I know Mr. Ubanks and Mr. Castro.
And with two who have resigned, that would be six. I mean, five.
You have the five, which would still be a forum. As long as there's four, there would still be a forum.
What, what would be the remedy as in a timeframe to, you know, to fix issues that you're discussing?
That would be for council whenever there's a special meeting, it could be, it could be as early as seventy-two hours from now. It could be whenever council gets together and decides to have that.
Where I've already got a request for the twenty-ninth of December because we will need to canvass on our election. You could choose to do it that night also. Instead of having an additional meeting. We can, we can still do business on that night. Right now, I'm just requesting it just to canvas the meeting, just to do the canvas of the election. But we can still do regular business after we canvas, swear in, and do regular business like we've done with this.
Are the five board members still active in the FDC, they all would like to stay?
I can't speak to that.
Several of them have been reappointed.
Yes, but those five still, they're considered stable.
If I may, I'd like, I'm the director of FDC, and I just wanted them to know, we have, out of seven members, we have, that we have two members that have resigned, effective the eighth of December. And we have two board members whose term has expired on the eighth of December, the ninth of December. And those have to be reappointed or something, otherwise we have four vacancies really, because their terms have expired, and two resignations.
And the, and the two that are, are going to be reappointed, they can serve in what we call the holdover method, which means their terms are up, but they're still gonna be able to participate, make a forum, vote until a replacement, or until they're reappointed to that same spot.
Mr. Baker, do you have a meeting this month, or you've already held any meeting?
We just met.
Okay, so we're gonna get until January.
And how about the four A board, which is necessary, they need, for them to hold a forum and...
We still have four out of five that are on the four A and willing to meet to establish a forum and make things work.
But will they?
I believe so.
Well, after, well, after they have not licensed or applied, we gotta reset up for a small...
It's posted for tomorrow.
Well, yeah, can you put in the newspaper and the website that we have appointments on the board?
No.
No.
It's, it's on...
I think there's, there's enough people that have, that have...
We do have, we do have it on the, on the website that we are looking for.
Since, since all of us served the question, why not go ahead and point? And if you wanna sweep us all out come January, you can do it then. But to fulfill and have the board's position still, I think it would be wise if you, since you already have canvases, I understand. Get the appointments made, get it over with, get it done. And then if you wanna get rid of all of us again, we serve at your pleasure. So it really is a moot point, except to have the board position still. My, my opinion.
Any other procedural questions?
So you could make, you're asking us not to make, you know, a recommendation of five people, could you make multiple recommendations? As a councilman and get it approved?
You can just do them one at a time.
That's what I'm saying, so I could nominate one and then not make somebody else?
Correct. There's nothing to say, you can only nominate one person. If your person gets on, that's good, if not, you don't get to nominate, you can nominate as many people as you want.
Then they have to be just voted on as a majority?
Yes.
Like, you know, say, January, why somebody? The remainder, or the remaining councilmen have to vote as, as ye?
Right, for that person to be placed on the board, yes. It's by a majority vote after a nomination.
Now, we're gonna go on to item two G of data standards in USDA, Brad, how's it?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Larry Heimer, and I also have with me tonight William Cossey. We're with Beery. William is our wastewater engineer principal in our, in our office and handles all the wastewater type and water type projects that we do. But we're here tonight to give you an update on really two items. And if it's okay, Mayor, you know, because we started the, the sewer model process before the PER and the USDA, I'd like to kind of cover that quickly first. We're done with that project, but give you an update on that, and then I'll go over to the PER, if that's okay. The wastewater model, I guess the first part of that process, we did the mapping. We, the first, about half of that project was to create system maps based on current city block map information. That we, we added existing wastewater mains to that map. And we did it in a GIS format, which is kind of state-of-the-art way of doing that mapping. And working with your city staff, we basically created a complete map that shows your existing wastewater system. That information is, in some cases, based on field measurements and field verifications, and other areas, it's based on this past information. But it was the best information available. And this map will need to be updated on a pretty regular basis. And we'll certainly work with the city and staff on keeping that map up to date as you need. But we would recommend that as soon as possible, that you try to get someone trained. I think the idea of this whole process was that the city would be able to take these maps over, and update them from time to time, or as projects were added or changes were made. Your staff would be able to go in using GIS and be able to make those changes. So I would recommend that as soon as possible, that needs to be done. The, the cost of the GIS software is about fifteen hundred dollars for kind of the minimum amount that you would need. And the, the computer that can run that is probably what you have in your office. Typically, something that's within two years old can probably run that software. But if you had to buy a computer to be able to run that software, it'd probably be about fifteen hundred dollars. And then the last part of that, it's, it's about the same amount again, fifteen hundred dollars would be needed to train your staff. So anyway, I would just recommend for that part of our project, that we've given you the maps now, you all need to think about having a program, ongoing program that allow you and your staff to maintain those maps. The, the project, you know, the second part of that project was to do a sewer model. And the purpose of that was to do an analysis of your existing collection system, determine if there were any existing capacity issues that needed to be addressed immediately. And then also determine, you know, how close your system is to capacity. And so we went through that, created the model, and that can be, it's run on a spreadsheet, which your staff has the software to run that, and to make the adjustments as necessary. But that, it's, it's not a software that you can go and buy, it's just a simple spreadsheet type modeling, uh, format. Anyway, our analysis, we went through and we identified current flows that were going through the system, and also looked at kind of forecasted future areas that would be developing. And under that process, we determined, you know, lines that were at capacity or near capacity, and, or had some issues related adverse slope and things like that. But our, our project went through, and we developed a kind of a list of projects there. Again, this hasn't, you know, it'll probably be a list that we'll look at with staff. This is strictly related to capacity type issues, where you're getting close to capacity. But I would like to say first of all that you don't have any immediate need projects that you need to take care of now with capacity. Your system has the capacity for what you have right now. But in some areas, you're real close. Uh, but, but in some areas, you're real close. And again, the, the flow, uh, the amount of the flow going through those pipes varies based on infiltration, which we tried to estimate. But again, it's hard to tell exactly what those numbers are. If you go into a wet period of time, there may be some areas that your staff may see some surcharging, or some areas where the, the flow maybe is not going through as well as it should. But again, from our analysis, you have, your system has the capacity today. But there are areas that need to be programmed to get fixed as soon as possible. And these projects kind of identify that. There's a total of about a one twenty-eight million dollars of, of projects there that we've estimated. Again, these are projects that should be programmed to be done as soon as possible, because you're right at that capacity level right now. Uh, the, the, the analysis that we had, sort of the next map there, William, uh, this kind of shows the overall system, uh, this kind of overall view. There are some, um, exhibits in the report that we provided the city that describes this. But let me go to the next slide, William. We kind of identified two areas that we identified would be kind of phase one. Again, this, uh, we'll coordinate and go over this with your staff to discuss this further and make sure we all agree. But there's two areas. The first area is, is on the, uh, sort of the, I guess, the, near the, uh, hospital boulevard area. It's a line that kind of connects between the Paharito Creek lift station, which pumps over this way, and then runs to an older part of the city, back behind the old hospital area there. Uh, it, it's, and it goes down to the lift station that's located on Highway ninety-seven. But there's a segment of pipe there that's a little over five thousand feet of pipe, that ranges in size, right now, from six to eight inch. And, uh, those pipes are just right at capacity. And so we would recommend that, uh, that area be programmed to be done, uh, as quickly as possible, uh, because there is development happening in the Paharito Creek area. There's a lot of proposed subdivisions out there, and a lot of other things are happening out there on one eighty-one and going kind of east of town. So that is an area I'd recommend we consider. Again, that's about, probably about a seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar total cost item. And again, it would probably be done in phases, and we could work with your staff.